We'll open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Nikki Cummings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have Reverend Chris White to lead the invocation. Thank you Reverend White.
Feel bowed and pray with me. Father, we come before you and thank you for this opportunity to gather. Father, to discuss the business of the school board, the business of our schools, Father, the business of our young people. Father, I pray that you would grant wisdom this evening, that you would guide our thoughts, Father, that you would temper our spirits, temper our attitudes. Father, may we keep everything in the spirit of goodwill. Father, I know there's deep passion concerning issues when it comes to our young people. Father, as a parent myself and you as a parent, Father, know exactly where we're at. We want to do what's right by them, Father, but sometimes we always can't figure out the best way. So Lord, guide our thoughts this evening. Be with those who will speak, be with those who will listen. And Father, may everything be said and done according to your will. We pray this in your precious name. Amen.
Before we get started, I would like to thank you all for coming. We've got a great crowd tonight. I would also like... Oh, sorry. I would also like to thank all the principals and staff members and teachers I see from West Putnam. Thank you, C.H. Price and Michelle Higginbotham for hosting us tonight. It's great to be in West Putnam. Our first presentation will be by Dr. Surrancey, and he's going to recognize members of the Yarn Wizards of Interlochen for their gift of handmade hats and scarves to the students of Aquila Elementary School.
Are they here tonight?
Evelyn's here to accept.
Okay.
Oh, Ms. Langston?
I have a presentation, have a certificate to present to the Yarn Wizards of Interlochen. Actually Carolyn Slope, I believe, is in charge of that, and says they made 50 hats and scarves for the holiday gift program at Aquila Elementary. And the certificate of appreciation, this is certified, that the Yarn Wizards of Interlochen, thank you for your time and talents in making hats and scarves for the students of Aquila Elementary School. Presented April 3rd, 2018. And Ms. Langston, the principal of Aquila, is going to accept on the hat. So thank you for the speech.
Our next presentation will be for C.H. Price Middle School FFA members, Tracy Hornsby, if you would come up. And while they're coming up, I would just like to tell you how special this is for me. Many, many years ago, before my father became superintendent of schools in Putnam County, he was an FFA teacher at Mellon High School, and he started the first FFA chapter ever in Putnam County. So FFA has always been very special to me. So come on up and introduce your kids to us.
Hi, thank you so much for having us tonight. Like she said, I'm Tracy Hornsby. I'm the agri-science teacher and FFA advisor here at C.H. Price. And I want to take a moment to introduce our livestock judging teams who are here with us tonight. We have Ms. Sanaya Oliver, Mr. Raymond Smith, Mr. Hayden Shiver, Mr. Nathaniel Bernardino, Mr. Wyatt Worley, Ms. Brianna Stallings, and Ms. Meredith Hornsby. Let's give them around the clock. These students are the prime example of students who are dedicated, responsible, hardworking. They never give up. They give their full effort in everything they do. They're family to me. Every year I grow closer and closer to every officer team and FFA members that I'm a part of. So they're going to share a little bit about what livestock judging is and how they prepare for it and what FFA means to them. And I want to personally thank you for allowing us to continue to have FFA at our middle school. We are very fortunate to have this program. So thank you. And welcome to the podium, Hayden Shiver.
Hello, I'm Hayden Shiver from C.H. Price FFA chapter. I'm the president of my chapter, or our chapter, and I would like to tell you all a little bit about the competition we have competed in. We competed in livestock judging. Well, livestock judging consists of about six classes, five to six classes per county, and it has swine, cattle, poultry, and well, not really poultry, but goats. And those goats mess with us.
Are they fainin' goats?
No, they get us every time. But we've competed in Alachua, Bradford, and Putnam so far. At Bradford County, our A-team, which consists of Raymond, Smith, myself, Meredith Hornsby, and Wyatt Worley, we took first place in that competition, and our B-team took third, which is Sanaya Oliver, Nate Bernardino, Dixie Smith, and Bree Stallings.
That's wonderful.
Wyatt Worley took second high individual for that competition. At Putnam, we took second place on our A-team and fourth place on our B-team. Meredith got third high individual overall scoring for that competition. And I'd like to invite her to the podium to tell you all a little bit about how we prepare for our livestock judging competitions.
Hey, I'm Meredith. Oh, can y'all hear me? Okay. Hey, I'm Meredith, and I'm the vice president from C.H. Price. And when we prepare for livestock judging, we usually meet every Wednesday and Thursday morning at 8:30, and we'll practice from 8:30 to 9:00. And what we do is we get on our computers, our Chromebooks, and we usually pull up websites that can help us, and we look at different animals and we place them, and then there's like a box where you can put your placings, and it tells you if you're right. So that's really how we prepare. And the FFA has really helped me, like, I guess you could say come out of my shell, because before I was in FFA, I was really shy, and like, I couldn't be able to speak here today. So it's helped me like speak in front of people without being so nervous. So Hayden's going to come up and talk about his FFA experience.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm back again. I agree with Meredith. I would not be able to talk to any of y'all. I would not even want to really walk up to this podium if it wasn't for FFA. My first year really competing in stuff, not just being a member and showing up to the meetings, I decided to do extemporaneous speaking because I wanted to be able to talk to people. I was a really socially awkward person, couldn't really start conversations, so I was like, I'll force myself to do a speaking competition. And I actually got first place on my first go around, made it to the second, and then I got second place at the second competition. And I was really happy with that. And that's what allows me to be able to speak in front of crowds like this without getting so stressed out about it. That's why I love FFA. It helps people like me be able to actually speak. Thank you.
Thank you, darling.
And I didn't want to put them on the spot, but if any of my other members would like to share any of their FFA experience before we wrap our presentation up, I'd like to give them that opportunity now. Any of the rest of you like to... You good? Are we... y'all good? Okay, all right.
We would certainly like to thank you for raising, helping raise these future leaders in Putnam County. They make us so proud.
It's my privilege. So thank you once again for allowing us to continue our program.
Absolutely. Okay, now we have Tanya Whitehurst to recognize the Interlochen Rotary for their contributions to the West Area Schools. And I know some of these are good.
Good evening. We are very excited tonight to have Interlochen Rotary, the president, and several of the members here tonight. Mr. Larry Harvey is going to come up, and he's going to introduce the members and just kind of give an idea of what they have done for our West Area Schools this year. And when he is finished with that, Ms. Drew, Assistant Principal at Interlochen Elementary School, she has a presentation that she would like to make to the Rotary Club.
Get the riches up here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, thank you, school board members. Board attorney, nice to see you tonight. I still get nervous talking in front of people, and I'm the county commissioner, right? I would like to introduce some of our people that are with us tonight, our Rotarians. Interlochen Lake Area Rotary Club is probably about six years, but old, and right now Ms. Leah Lunding's with us tonight, Ms. Mary Rich, Richard Rich, and myself. We have some other people that were Rotarians. Kathy Jorgensen was one of our founding members, and Tom Williams was here with us, and Mr. Bowling, he was with us at one time. We lost a little bit due to some school shuffling and times, and we don't hold that against you, but we are seeking new applications and memberships as we speak. I would like to say some of the things that we get involved in, we are a social club that does good work. That's what we try to do. We meet two times a month, and then we have a social on the fourth time we meet, the fourth Tuesday, Thursday. Recently, we have given out 45 pairs of new shoes to Interlochen Elementary, to Aquila, and to Melrose. And that makes a big difference to children. Dictionaries are given to every third grader in this area. Scholarships to Interlochen High School students who need scholarships to go on to further their education. School supplies here at Price Middle School. And we love doing the working concession stand at the high school one time a year. We do it at homecoming to give the parents who haven't got a chance to see their children play, do that. It's a lot of fun to get out of your element and holler, "Hot dog, hot dog, hamburger, popcorn, popcorn," you know, and watch out for the flying Coke. It's just a lot of fun, and we really enjoy it. So I've been very fortunate this year, my year is almost ending, to be the president of our Rotary Club. And again, we'll be turning that over here in June pretty soon to new people, but it's just been a pleasure and a privilege to serve this area. And anything we can do to help you, we're at your holler. Just give us, let us know what we can do. I know there's recent topics, and Dr. Surrancey was just in the room. We're willing to help. We're not here just to tell you how to do it. We're willing to help you become successful. So thank you very much, and thank you Rotarians for being with us.
Larry, I just wanted to say, I think this Rotary is one of the newer Rotaries in the county, right? But what I do know is y'all hit the ground running and just stepped up and have been such great service to West Putnam.
Thank you.
And it's appreciated.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, don't leave. My name is Diana Drew, and I'm here on behalf of Interlochen Elementary. I'm the assistant principal there. And as Mr. Harvey just mentioned, they did donate 40 pairs of shoes to our school. We're a high-poverty area. Our kids come to school daily needing things. So this is a really great help to us and our students that come to the clinic that need things, like shoes. And so one of our instructional assistants, who's very artistic, made a card for you guys. I'll just read what the card says, just so you know that we appreciate you. It says, "Dear Interlochen Lakes Area Rotary, thank you so much for the donation of shoes that you gave to Interlochen Elementary School. Your generosity is appreciated by students and employees. Keep up the good deeds for the community from everyone at IES." So thank you very much.
I'm going to give it to Mary. Mary's the one who really went out there, bought all the shoes.
I thought Richard was making the shoes.
Yeah, it's the ladies that really are the force behind it. It's good to see you, Richard Rich.
Jane, can I say one thing?
Sure.
I've seen you on the board over 12 years.
You sure can.
New year, Dad. Made man to work for and work with.
Thank you.
And the kids out here, we tend in life to keep things out of court course. I still have my FFA jacket.
Aw. Wish I had that.
Phil fits two dozen of them.
It doesn't fit anymore. Okay, it's public comment time. I have one public comment card. Just it? Okay. Mr. Lynn Freeman. Put you on three minutes, Lynn. Sharon's doing it.
Thank you, thank you, board. What a great attendance for your meeting. We like the evening meetings, and we like them where people are. It's great. I attended last night, for all of you, a workshop that the board had regarding school safety, and I thought it was a very good workshop and a very good first step to move forward, to look at the issues that we have surrounding the subject of school safety in our Putnam County schools. There's no doubt that keeping our children, teachers, and staff safe in our schools is the highest of all responsibilities that we face as a community today. There's also no doubt that we produce our best results when we bring together stakeholders and experts collaborate in finding solutions to complex problems. And the safety of our schools is definitely, as we found out in the meeting yesterday evening, a very complex matter that no single solution can solve. I put together a proposal. I have copies of it if anybody would be interested in looking at it, but it basically focuses on establishing a task force of stakeholders and experts that will come together to create a comprehensive strategic school safety plan for our Putnam County schools, in concert and very much like what Officer Travis Weaver is doing right now. We are all faced with the question of what we do now to protect our children, teachers, and employees in our schools. There's nothing new about this situation. It's just simply back in our faces. I'm sure that there is agreement in this room on one thing, and that is that once we hear gunfire in our schools, that's a sign that we have failed. The echo of shots fired will likely be the signal that someone is already dead, and we want to never have that be something we hear. It should not also be the job of the school board principals, superintendent, or any staff alone by themselves. It's far too complex a matter for any of us to take on by ourselves. That's why I firmly believe that we need to assemble a group, as outlined in my proposal, and charge that group with creating a comprehensive strategic school safety plan. We should call upon administrators, teachers, students, parents, grandparents, county and state officials, law enforcement, experts, bus drivers, custodian, anybody that can bring something to the table for our task force. The task force will receive input, analyze and strategize, and produce a comprehensive strategic school safety plan with recommendations for action. The task force shall develop a timeline for implementation of action items that meets the short-term objective of making our schools as safe as possible now. Along with that, the task force should also examine all matters concerning safety in the longer term and make recommendations for action to be taken in the future. I have studied the statistics of school shootings in our country over the last 50 years or so. The odds of your child or your grandchild being shot and killed while attending their school in this country or this county is about the same as me winning the Florida lottery.
Lynn.
Somewhat loosely calculated as winning the Florida lottery. But you know what? Someone wins the lottery every few years. So yes, even with the big odds, it could happen here. We do not want any of our schools to be the one holding the ticket that wins us a tragedy. Thank you.
And if anybody would like to ask him questions, you can do so after the meeting.
Sure. And I have copies of the proposal that I put together and simply asked the board to consider to put together a task force, really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on now to the consent agenda. Ms. Gilliard, I always start with you, it seems like. Is there anything you would like to pull?
I just need to have Justin, if you would, to finish with F2.
So we're pulling F2?
He was explaining at the time.
Well, maybe it's something we all should...
I wanted to pull it too.
Okay. David? Nikki? Kathy? I have none.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus F2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
And I think Justin is prepared to come and ask you questions about that.
He had started.
Right. Justin, could you come up and talk about E-rate?
His favorite subject.
Okay, Justin London, Information Services Department. So what's brought before you is a contract to upgrade the wireless access points and add additional network switches to the elementary schools. Last year, you approved the middle-high school upgrades. This is just the continuation. The total amount, we only pay 15% of that cost, and that cost will be covered through the digital classroom plan money that's been allocated for next year. All right?
Thank you. That's always good to hear, that it's covered by something.
Was there someone else that, someone else pulled that, had a question to Justin?
Kathy, I think, said she was going to.
No, I just wanted to clarify. You just clarified for me. Thank you, Justin. That answered my question. Make a motion? Thank you. I make a motion that we approve item F2.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, it's now we're, are we at an emergency? We're going out of regular session into emergency session. We have two items. The first is out-of-state travel for the Director of Federal Programs to Washington, DC on April 4th through 6th. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. The second item is overnight travel for the Palatka High School weightlifter and coach to the state weightlifting meet in Panama City, April 5th through 6th. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I move we approve.
Uh, hang on, it's Interlochen High School.
Oh, I have this on mine. It says Palatka High School. Okay.
Interlochen High? It is Interlochen High.
Okay. Okay. In error, it should be Interlochen High.
I make a motion to approve the item with the correction of Interlochen High School.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Who would that rest with?
Weightlifter.
That's a weightlifter. I thought it was...
I saw his picture in the paper, but I don't remember the name.
It used to be a macaturian.
Right. Out of emergency session, back into regular session. We'll go to discussion of new business budget amendments. Ms. Rhonda Oden, CFO of Putnam District Schools.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, these will not be near as they were in Crescent City, so that was our rough month. That was a third calculation FBFP, but this month is a lot better. These are the budget amendments for February 2018. In the general fund, we had an increase of $21,051, and this was made up of the 5K Sprint for Kids Project, the Mosh Outreach Grant from the Northeast Florida Regional STEM Hub, the charter school capital outlay money transferred in to appropriate to the charter schools, a donation from Seminole Electric for pre-K STEM, and donations from payroll deductions for the backpack program. There were no changes to the fund balance. In capital project funds, we had an increase of $2,686, and that was that receipt of charter school capital outlay dollars. School service, school food service, there was no change in revenue or fund balance, just various budget changes as needed within the school food service fund. In our special revenue fund, we had an increase of revenue of $878,713, and this was made up of Title V Part B Rural Education Achievement Program Grant. That was $181,814. We had a correction to an adult education grant of an additional $99, and we received the Florida Bright, Best and Brightest Teacher and Principal Award of $696,800. In the internal service funds, which are the Nefec funds, we had an increase of revenue of $847,499.42, and that was the SEC TIF Gilchrist No Cost Extension Grant. And other than that, there were no further changes. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Has the Best and Brightest money been distributed yet?
Yes, we, we got that all, all taken care of by the deadline, no problems.
Wonderful. I know they were thrilled to get it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Did they? No, that's good. Okay, next, discussion, input, and possible action regarding... Oh, okay. I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented by our CFO.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Now we'll talk, discuss input and possibly act regarding school board committees. Well, I think I brought this up because after doing some research with Charlie's firm, I found that any committee, the board, any board committee that comes back with a recommendation to the board, for example, our calendar committee and our insurance committee, any committee of the boards that's going to come back with a recommendation to the board is subject to the Sunshine Law. That means their meetings have to be noticed, there have to be minutes taken, public is invited to attend, et cetera. So I brought this up so that, number one, we can make our committee members aware, because this is just something that... Is it not being done now? I don't think it is. I don't think... I know we get a recommendation from the insurance committee, but I don't know, did somebody take notes while y'all are there? Minutes?
Minutes, I mean.
Madam Chair, can I clarify with the attorney? Now, if these committees make a recommendation to the superintendent to bring back to the board, is that the same, do they also require sunshine?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we clarify that.
So we need to kind of clarify, we have a calendar committee, we have an insurance committee, we have an expulsion committee. Is that it? Is there any more?
Unless we start this task force. Is there a recorder at the expulsion committee?
Yes, yes.
So that's... Then it's our task. The expulsion committee's not a problem. Yeah. But the insurance negotiations also?
That was the one. That's...
The negotiations are supposed to be in the sunshine.
We have in past, we have complied in the past years. I'm not certain that we're not in compliance right now, but I don't, Kathy's right, if we do, if the board forms a committee and they report back to us they are bound by the sunshine law, then every committee meeting would have to be advertised.
But we don't get to form that committee. It's picked by somebody else, correct?
No, it wouldn't necessarily be if the board requested.
No. Well, but I mean, we don't pick the insurance committee or the calendar committee. Right, I just served on it.
And then they invite me to the meetings.
Well, only because of a policy. We can change policy.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but right now we don't pick it, the way it is now.
Sure.
So then what are we saying?
Charlie would have to give a more defined answer, but two or more...
There is a policy for citizen committees, so items that would involve a more focused input on citizens would be selected by the superintendent, but approved by the board. Other committees that are not focused on involving citizens, more issues that are closer to the district, the policy is silent on who makes that decision. And you could either appoint them yourself, or if you wanted the superintendent to come up with names and you review them and approve them, to me, based on a reading of the policies, that would be permitted also. But the citizen committees, there's a well-defined policy on point, and that procedure is for the superintendent to choose and be approved by the board.
Kathy's comment, though, helps avoid the appearance of propriety, which is also important. So it would probably be better, Rick, if you could just, any committees you established, just have them advertised.
Not a problem.
Well, I feel like they would need a little bit of training in the sunshine, because they don't understand... But, I mean, we go to trainings every year to talk about the sunshine law, so I felt like if we could have maybe our board attorney do a, I don't think it would take more than an hour.
For both committees at the same time.
Well, all, there's four.
Yeah, four, yeah.
If it's advertised, two members of the board could show up and not be in, out of compliance.
Right, out of...
Of course.
Right, out of, right. Well, and I, I know with the calendar committee, it seems like about once a month, I have some, a teacher call me and ask how to get on the calendar committee that they'd like to serve, and I said that we didn't pick that committee. I always refer to Rick.
The policy is silent.
Yeah, just have them call our office.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Since the policies are silent as to who picks the committees, then we can.
It used to be that everybody from the site, every school had a representative, but I don't know how that was picked.
I never wanted to be one of those. Too controversial.
I would think the principal would be responsible for coming up with the faculty.
If they were bargaining unit members, would pick their representatives.
Yeah. And then I understand, too, at some point, it may have gotten too unwieldy with so many members, the size of it. I know Debbie had mentioned that at one time, but, you know, maybe we could rotate schools, you know, reps from schools or something, you know, at least have some members from each end of the county, in the central part of the county, you know. Look at the makeup of it.
What would be to just advertise committees?
And then let the people choose themselves if they want to serve.
Can't do that, huh?
Yeah.
So we have the insurance committee and we have the calendar committee. Do we want to form a task force to look into our school safety options as presented by Mr. Freeman? I just don't want to let that fall through the cracks.
Right, there's too much good in it.
And this is the time to talk about it.
I think, I think that might be a good thing to think of, and I wanted to hear from the superintendent and the sheriff on some of the things coming up on the agenda in a few minutes, and then that's certainly...
On this agenda?
There's nothing on this agenda.
There's nothing on our agenda, David.
Well, you referring to the next meeting, is that, or future meetings regarding school safety?
Well...
Y'all on that one?
I was, I was looking at additional items for substations.
And we did, we did, y'all approved that tonight, substations.
I was in there.
It was under the consent agenda. It was an emergency item.
Yeah, it was on a regular agenda to be approved tonight.
Just like the other paper.
In hearing what I heard from principals last night, the two I heard from, I've never met a principal yet that didn't want more help, and whether it be a certified law enforcement officer, or a pediatrician, or a mental health counselor, or additional counselors, they all want more people. Certainly, it doesn't hurt to have a task force, but my past experience shows that these things can get too big and too wieldy, and it would need to be people that are certainly, certainly qualified, and people such as our bus drivers that are the eyes and ears. I mean, they're going to be part of any, any security things we do, because they're all on their own. I mean, I can see what Kathy's point is. We do need to look at it, and it needs to be continually update the board on where they are and different things.
Well, if you choose to, choose to form the board, I believe by policy, you need to determine maybe the number of members on the committee and their mission, and then we can make a recommendation on who, who those members are.
And then, too, his, Lynn's idea of the task force is great, but you got to remember, everyone has not heard of it yet. West Putnam is hearing of it tonight. Central heard of it last night, but what about South Putnam? For those people, certainly, we want people from all corners of the county to be, to hear about it, so we need to advertise it.
Oh, certainly, but I don't think that forebodes us...
I hear what Kathy is saying about tonight, but you want to give others the opportunity to...
We want all stakeholders to be aware of it.
Yes, and maybe put it on May's agenda, when we have advertised in the, in the south, here, and in Central Palatka, for anyone interested in becoming...
Except the superintendent is going to require us to vote on the Guardian program at our next meeting in two weeks. It's going to be on the agenda, right?
I believe it's on the agenda. You don't have to vote at that meeting, but I would caution the board that time is of the essence, and we have to choose and implement before the beginning of the new school year.
We and all the other 66 counties who don't have the money to do.
I think there was an April deadline, or 18th deadline, or something like that, to get, to get cranked up.
No, there wasn't.
I saw something...
Did you read the letter from the governor?
Yeah.
There's a letter from the governor.
And I gave y'all information last night.
I did read, and I...
Well, then, don't come up with dates that aren't written in stone. I can't stand this rushing, when we have a, we have a, we have a benchmark that has been sent by our governor that has given us specifics, and I keep looking at it.
You heard her read them last night. That's where it was taken.
I looked at an April, April 1st or 18th deadline, and I, maybe I am misspeaking, Miss Cummings. I'm certainly sorry, but to rush into a, it can make this thing bigger than it has to be, when elements of this are going to have to be like the air marshal program that are quiet and, and not going to be able to be revealed. I mean, okay, I guess...
You think that's going to be quiet in Putnam County?
You really think that's possible?
I think that you're going to have to have, like, crime stoppers, when they offer a reward, you're going to have to have an element of secrecy in this, or you're going to have somebody get, get hurt for giving information out on who's doing what. And it's, it's very serious and very dangerous, and I see principals shaking their head, yes, and I've been a principal, Miss Cummings, and I know what it's like, and I've taken loaded guns off of kids, I've told you that, ad nauseam, I know what I'm talking about, it's serious business.
It is.
And that's why everybody needs to be involved.
But I, I think that we've got a state law that's been passed, and we're going to have to start the ball rolling. If we kick a task force, it needs to be a manageable group, selected because of their qualifications and their level of involvement, and I think we need to move forward, rather than to just kick the can down the road a little bit. So that's me, that's me. I mean, I, you name it, taking straight razors, knives, and it happens, right here in Putnam County, I've done it.
So we could make a motion to establish a safety task force?
Yes.
And if you can, the, the policy does require that the board articulate the, the purpose of the task force, what the intent is, and the duration of the task force.
So we need intent and duration.
The intent would be to start Senate Bill 7026, implement the policies and procedures that the school board will be moving forward with to implement the safety of our schools. Do you want, I'm trying to just come off the top of my head with all the information we've read, but it's to implement Senate Bill 7026.
To recommend the, the chosen implementation methods.
The way we should...
How should Putnam County School District implement Senate Bill 7026?
Correct, right.
That's good.
And you say, did you ask for duration, Charlie?
Yes.
Duration of this committee?
Of the committee.
Would not that be ongoing, and, and the people rotate them out as...
Well, it would have to be finished prior to the deadline with, that we have to submit our plan, correct?
Well, I would think that it would be ongoing, because in the letter, it also says that every school does establish by, you know, they have a committee, so that would be in correlation, because you're going to have, by the law, it says that we have to have threat assessment team. So I don't know if we need to call it a threat assessment team, because that, by September 1st, 2018, that has to be established.
Don't we have it?
Every school has it.
We already have a threat assessment.
But if we, if we implemented it part of the safety, you know, task force, I don't know if we want to implement that.
We could use that as part of...
Because I'm not sure if we have it already, that probably would be something we would want the threat assessment team to be involved with the safety task force.
They're going to have to, and you're going to have to have mental health counselors part of it.
Travis?
Could you give us a little more information on the threat assessment team?
And kind to help us sort through this?
And while Travis is coming to the podium, if I could recommend to the board that you request a, a final written report from the committee, the, the policy allows for the ending point, or the termination date, or the dissolving date of that committee to be upon the rendering of their final written report as an option. So if you include that in a motion, that the committee be dissolved upon its rendering of their final report, then that would be the endpoint.
I apologize, I did not hear the question. I was being asked something in the back.
Sandy, I think, had the question.
Now I'm hearing.
Threat assessment.
I'm hearing now that the safety task force, upon completion of their job, they then are dissolved, and whatever policy they have come up with, once we approve it, that goes into, into action.
Don't go away, don't go away, I have a question.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
The board...
So then, it sounds like the threat assessment team is totally different from the...
Has the threat assessment team finished their assessment at each school?
Are you talking about the behavioral threat assessment teams?
That's what they're doing.
But there's, tell us what threat assessment teams you have.
The behavioral threat assessment team is a group at each school. It's made up by specific persons.
And somebody could be added to that at any time.
And if, if a student makes or does something that poses a threat, they convene, they investigate it, and they come to a conclusion. Based on that conclusion, it may end up resulting in the school implementing some type of safety plan, or referral to law enforcement.
So are you notified of, each time a, if there is a time that a, a student is being assessed as a threat, are you notified?
Yeah, we, we actually have come up with a mechanism through Skyward, where it's reported automatically and flagged.
So he could be on our task force as the threat assessment person.
Okay, so there is a, there is a major difference.
And what is the other assess, threat assessment team? You said...
I'm not sure what you're referring to in the, in the statutes there, but we have, annually, each school convenes a safety team, usually over the summer...
Right, you talked about that.
...to do a safety audit of their individual campus.
That's what that is, yeah. Okay.
And there's like, roughly 85 different areas or topics that they address, and then they have to address how they mitigate any deficiencies in those.
There's also one that, by, called for the statute, where we will apply for the competitive grant for additional funding for school hardening, and that's the one that has to be done, I believe, by August, and then the money would not be available till, like, December.
Yeah, is that a, are you talking about the one that they reference, the, the reporting, it's a reporting tool that they're coming up? Yeah. I think that, and this is just my opinion, please, don't quote me, I, I think that's a spinoff of what we do, the annual OPAGA report, where we do, yes, the safety report we do, and the big, long safety, I think that might be a spinoff of that Safe School Assessment Tool that they're working on.
As to what the state really did is, is protect what the stuff we're already doing and just say they're doing it, so really, it, but it's like Lynn said a while ago, now this is in our face, and it's going to have to be something our board continually strives to stay up with and be, you know, we, we finally are getting our workshop on safety and security, it's going to have to continue to happen, because like Sandy, as a principal here, had to go through the unthinkable and have a child that was murdered by other children over, another child over, some real silly stuff like Pokemon cards, and, you know, you've got to have the threat assessment at school, with mental health counseling, and law enforcement, it all has to be seamless and tie together. So I, I don't have a problem with the superintendent getting with Mr. Weaver and, and trying to select those that would be on this committee, and I know board members are certainly would be welcome to give input to superintendent on who they might think would be very good to have on the committee as well. So that'll be up to him, how many, how he's going to hold it down, because I, I was talking to the, to the attorney earlier before the meeting in the state, they've got a, got some kind of safety net assessment team that's getting so large and ridiculous and unmanageable, there's no way to take rational, you know, thoughts when you get 150 people on a committee.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was going to ask the board if you wanted to model this committee after the proposal from Mr. Freeman. I think there are 22 different categories, 22 different categories.
But some people may serve as, like, two categories, like a grandparent and a...
Bus driver.
Bus driver.
But if you could give the superintendent guidance as to the organization and structure that you would prefer to see, that would be helpful, when the superintendent is making those appointments to bring back before the board for you to approve.
Okay. So we would want to model this, there's 22, but they could...
But we don't have to have 22.
Right, there was 22.
In other words, if you wanted to narrow that board, so instead of it being that large, you could take next number of people.
Yeah, definitely.
I don't see Mr. Freeman's proposal as being a bad, I mean, it's a wonderful proposal, but superintendent and the stuff that he and Mr. Weaver have been working on, along with law enforcement officials throughout the county, I mean, seeing as we've looked at two more, two more substations in different schools in the geographic areas of the county, looks to me like they've got something they might prefer to maybe mesh with this and maybe utilize parts of it, so I don't know that...
Right, I don't see why we can't work it, work together.
Well, yeah, I just don't want to dictate to, to, to law enforcement officials how they have to do this.
But they can't dictate to us either.
They can't dictate to us either.
Do you know that they're meeting with our employees, our volunteer employees, this week?
I know that Mark Modle, the Putnam Federation of Teachers, man, said that he had employees coming to him wanting to participate.
And they're being interviewed at the Sheriff's Department this week?
I would think there would be a lot of things going on as per the new state law that are, that are incompetence, and we're going to be told about it when it be like...
We hadn't adopted a plan yet.
We're not, it, it won't be enforceable until it's adopted by the board, if they come up with something, but...
May I speak to the committee again real quick?
Yes.
Do you mind? I'm just throwing this out there for your information. This year, we did a committee to go over the emergency operations plan, probably, Colonel Wells helped me, two months ago, two months ago roughly, and it had representatives from many different aspects. I think I covered this yesterday with you, law enforcement, EMS, DJJ, we had some parents, teachers, administrators, we had a cross-section.
This is for Parkland.
And what I, no, this was, this was, this was simply for input and recommendations for our emergency, our comprehensive school safety and emergency operations plan. And what I've done, and this is just me, this year, we sought representatives from the central district, from our, some of our central schools in the central district. The year before, for example, it was a south end. Next year, my plan was to approach some of the west area schools for those. So I'm just throwing that out there, I think we probably had 12 or 15 persons represented at that meeting, so I just wanted to throw that out there for y'all, so as your...
I want to add one more thing, too. There, there are certain aspects of what we do, and we, we were very careful to, in what we shared last night, that is very sensitive and confidential, that we cannot release to the public, because that's going to endanger people, endanger, you know, the kids in school, so we have to be very careful on what information we release. I do want to say that I am willing to sit down with each of you individually, and establish a time, and share some of that sensitive information, as I offered to do in executive session two weeks ago. The purpose of that is to share things that we cannot share in public, but to make you aware of that. So again, we're not trying to hide anything from you, but there is a lot of information that we want to make sure that the general public does not know, because the general public could have people, you know, gain information that could harm our kids or harm our schools. So again, I want to make that available to you, but in the right atmosphere.
Well, shouldn't it be like a need-to-know basis?
Absolutely.
Stuff like that, what we need to know.
Okay.
Unless it's something that's going to sway our mind one way or the other.
I'm saying if you... I'm saying if you would like to know, you can make an appointment, we'll meet with me, and I'll be happy to share it with you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
So if you could recommend to the superintendent that the number of people you would like to serve on that committee, uh, the composition of the committee, to give guidance for the superintendent to be able to make recommendations to this board for approval, that would help expedite this matter.
I'll probably file this up, but I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and let superintendent start forming this committee.
Test.
As provided by law, and in touch with the law enforcement officials on, in our school's system, and other law enforcement officials throughout the county that he would have to work with, and that he keep us apprised of a need-to-know basis of what it is that, that we're going into, because it will be the board that makes the ultimate decision if we have to form this. And if that's too, Charlie...
I just would ask if you would put a number on the committee, and if you would request a final written report.
Well, what does the superintendent think he needs on the committee? How many numbers?
All I'm gonna say is this is your committee, and whatever that number is manageable, 'cause I know, like someone said before, if you get too large, then you kinda lose control.
Twenty's plenty big to me.
Yeah.
But if the board has other numbers, um...
But, but we need, yes, this type of representation, that type of representation.
I make a motion that the school board-appointed committee would be formed for a safety task force to include approximately twenty-one members that would include people that were presented in our, um, safety task force plan that we received, and that at the end of the committee, that it would be dissolved at the conclusion of a report made by the committee.
Recommendation, right.
And is that committee, again, gonna be appointed by the superintendent, the twenty-one, by the superintendent, but keeping in mind according to that?
Yeah.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, due for more discussion. So then...
So now we'll have anyone that wants to discuss, yes.
Yeah, so in this proposal that we had twenty-two individuals that were named, as in like a representative from the Chamber of Commerce, but that might also be a parent, so we want to try to represent our community in this by all law, I mean, all law enforcement agencies, Crescent City, Interlock, and Palaca, and Sheriff's Department.
Because like Nikki, number sixteen, says at least two parents from each school in the county, well, that'll be thirty, you know, we can't have...
Right.
We're gonna have to figure out a way to, um, kind of...
Possibly one from the west, the south, and central. The committee itself can hold public forums at each end of the county and get input.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, that is a great idea. Now, are the school board members...
Well, it says one school board member.
And then are we, if the other ones come and, and, um, they don't participate, but they watch.
We can watch and listen.
And the other thing is, is it a ex-ficio board member voting? I mean, ex, if we were to come up with, say they come up with a task force recommendation, um, like, for instance, I don't, you know, we don't vote on our committees usually.
Uh, the, the policy reads that each school board member shall be notified of all committee meetings, but shall have no vote unless the member is serving as a committee member. So if one of the twenty-one is a school board member, then that person could be a vote of the twenty-one.
And the other ones could just be a spectator.
Right.
Yes, yeah, all the board members would be notified of the meetings and would be able to attend. It would be, these meetings would be in the sunshine, it would be noticed, minutes taken, and sunshine laws would apply.
Any other discussion?
Let me ask, if that twenty-one is max, like Nikki said, if you had one person that fit two or three of those, and it turned out to be less than that, is that acceptable to you, as long as all those groups are represented?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
As long as all those groups, um, because, you know, some, like I said with number sixteen, number, um, four is the same, you know, school administrators, principals, APDs, guidance counselors, I mean, you know, we could have one guidance counselor if we needed, you know, it's gonna get crazy if we have...
As far as the parents from schools, what was your, how do you want that represented?
That's what, like, how would we recruit these people? Is this something we could ask Mr. Freeman to, since this was his original plan, could we set him as some kind of chairman of the committee to try to bring names to us on the community level? Because most of these aren't all school-related employees, so we can't, I mean, we could put it in the newspaper, but at the same time, when we put, um, a gun-training expert in the newspaper, it might...
But, that could also, if Gaiters on the committee, he's a gun-training expert, he could do...
The intent of the policy is for the superintendent to name the individuals on the committee.
Okay.
And the board to approve. Now, as far as who is the chairperson of the committee, the policy specifically addresses that, that the chairperson of an advisory committee shall be chosen from among the lay members, so the chairperson would be a lay member of the committee.
As I said a while ago, it certainly wouldn't be inappropriate for you to speak to superintendent and recommend someone if you want to, but that'll be under advisement, that he'll have to take. The problem here is everything, we want everything to be as, in the sunshine, but there are things that they're going to have to deal with that could endanger somebody's life, and it's, it's, it's a...
Well, that would be setting guidelines of no specifics that are, I mean, no, no one knows the specifics except Travis, and, you know, he would know better than to disclose the gate at XYZ school, you know, school has got a big hole, I mean, you know, there's gotta be ways that...
I would hope that it would be that way, but unfortunately, sometimes the more people that are involved, the more information gets passed on, but I, I'm just one vote, you know.
Did they state when they needed the name submitted?
There, there's not a specified time, but I would recommend that it be on the next advertised board meeting, that, that the slate of twenty-one members would be...
And we can, you know, submit any names that we have thought of to you, Rick, if you can vet those, or...
Sure. And then maybe at the next meeting, it's, it's, um, as old business.
Yeah.
Or, you know, new, whatever.
Yeah, well, it'd be, it'd be an agenda item for your consideration.
Okay.
So we, we need a vote.
Yeah, we need to vote, unless there's any further discussion.
Did anybody second it?
Yes, Kathy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, it's that fun time of the meeting when we give our board reports. I'll start with you this time, Ms. Jordan.
I'm not really prepared, but I will say that after last night, I was, it was just so nice to be able to talk to you all about the subject, because of the sunshine law, only last night, that was the first time I could talk to my fellow board members, whom I happen to admire their opinions, 'cause they're coming from all different places, and it was the first time I got to hear what they had to say on this whole guns-in-school issue. We had not had the chance to even talk about it until last night, and I'm very proud of us, I think we talked it, and talked it, and talked it. I don't think we have a knee-jerk reaction to inhabited Parkland, though we are very concerned with the students in our district, um, we're thinking it out, we're thinking it through, we're getting input from every route we can, and we're praying that we make the right decisions for the kids in this community.
Right.
I'm done, that's it.
Ms. Cummings?
I also wanted to say that was a very informational, great meeting, um, a lot of discussion, a lot of hard choices. Um, I, again, always go back to what the law says, and again, when we got a Senate bill that's, um, several pages, and we get emails daily on what's supposed to be done, and I, I feel passionate about, uh, following that, that's why I keep bringing up the letter from the governor, if it wasn't important and he didn't think it was gonna be, we wouldn't have a timeline that says, you know, July first is when the Guardian program should be decided whether or not it will be happening, and that decision by law is in the school board's hands, and I just wanna continue to explore all the options and not know, you know, we hear all across the state, we hear all about our community and what people want and what they don't want, and, um, there's a lot of dialogue that needs to take place. But again, when we follow the law, and the law specifically says that the school board is tasked with this, then that's why I take it really serious, and there's no rush in this, it, it, there's a lot that has to be done, but again, um...
It's our job.
It's our job, and to think that we're gonna vote on the Guardian program next meeting is, is ridiculous. I don't know why you would think that would be a good idea, and if that's on our agenda, then if, if my fellow board members think that's a good idea...
No, I don't.
I would...
We, we haven't had our second workshop yet, I think that should be done tonight.
So, let's just, uh, we established a task, safety task force, so we're all interested in hearing from the stakeholders before we make any knee-jerk reaction. So I would hope that the board members would continue to see that for what it is, and not make a decision based upon a rush when there is time. So I was a little concerned when I couldn't even imagine in two weeks we're gonna make that choice. So I, I would just hope that you would reconsider putting that on the agenda, and if it is, then, that's, that's very upsetting, why would we even have a task force at that point? Really, so, and we've all decided, we voted tonight that we want a task force, so to go and say, we're gonna do the Guardian and vote on the Guardian program...
Well, we probably need to postpone that, until we... I would hope so.
I would hope so.
I mean, this board has indicated that we want to move a little...
Because if it gets voted down to, at two weeks, and it's voted down, then guess what? No matter what the task force says, it's done deal, it's closed, it's dead. So you, in your wisdom, better think about what's gonna happen if it is voted down next, in two weeks, that is just...
And we have no program.
There is no program, period, and a discussion, and that's off the table, and I'm not ready for it to be off the table.
Me either.
So if you put it on prematurely, it's off the table, it's not coming back on, it's done.
Let me, let me suggest this, instead of us grandstanding out here in front of everybody, if you'd like to make an appointment to come see me Monday, and then we can talk about it in private before we publish the agenda, but, um, you know, I'll make the agenda, and if you would like to have input on that agenda, you are more than welcome to come meet with me, okay?
I just made input, I, I had no clue until today that it was even gonna be on the agenda.
I didn't know either.
Nobody knew that.
We published the agenda seven days before the meeting, and if you'd like to come meet with me, each of you, then I'm...
Well, somebody found out it was on there.
He, he knew it was on.
Well, anytime you want to meet with me about an agenda item, you can come talk to me before we publish it.
I don't, I'm telling you, in a public setting, if it's on the agenda and it is voted down, then it's dead in the water, that it cannot be brought up, that is board policy. It is not something that you wanna take out and put in two weeks, and then it get voted down, and then guess what, we can't even explore the options.
We're a self-judicious body, and if, if this isn't something that's preempted by some type of state or federal law, then we can change our policy and our, and our vote just by a simple vote, even if it's contrary to our policy.
I'm just...
Just throwing that out.
Unbelievably surprised that it would be on the agenda in two weeks, I, I just can't fathom that.
And I'm surprised, I'm upset and surprised that we're interviewing employees, the sheriff is interviewing employees, I, I just...
Evidently, according to the, to the people I talked to, the principals and, and Mark Modle, people are coming forward wanting to be, wanting to be a part of it, I, of course, there's some people you wouldn't want carrying a gun, I mean, honestly, so I hope that somebody...
I think Mark was just saying, yeah, people had talked to him about it.
Yeah, he said seventy percent were against it.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just, it's, it's the board's agenda, and yeah, you, the superintendent can put something on there, but if it's voted down, that's, that's how they, they don't get to bring it back up again.
You know, several, we all know, I think the superintendent knows, several of the district's school boards went ahead and made a statement, the only armed people in our schools will be law enforcement, and each one of us saw that, and nobody brought it up for us to do it. Now, I hear Nikki say just what I was thinking, I didn't wanna shut the door on the Guardian program. That statement shuts the door on the Guardian program, and we haven't closed any doors, but if we're forced to choose, this is what I hear from Nikki, and I can tell you, I feel the same way, if it's being rammed down my throat before I'm ready to make a decision, yes or no, my answer's no.
What if when you meet with the superintendent, you feel more secure when you hear information that he might can share with you?
Why would we vote to approve a safety task force, then? Why would we wanna spend people's time and energy and money to come out and, and have input if we've said we want that as a community, the board anonymously just voted for that? Five-zero, that we want input, so why would we want to go ask people for input and then in the behind closed doors, meet with the superintendent and make a completely different decision?
And vote on it.
And vote on it.
Madam Chair, could I ask, Sheriff Deloach had some information that might be pertinent to this, Sheriff, if you would...
Gaiter, Sheriff, I mean, sorry.
Personally, I'd like to hear from Leah Lundey and some of the principals, and I guess they've all gone.
He always wants, don't put him on the...
You don't wanna hear from him, you don't...
Not in this video, if they are not prepared.
I don't think everybody came here just to talk about this issue, but...
Mrs. Cummings, you are correct, there is a date certain that the board has to come to an agreement with the sheriff to opt-in to the Guardian program to ensure that we have the proper funding from the state. I don't have that, I don't have a copy of the legislation in front of me, nor do I have a copy of the letter from the governor handy, so I can't speak to what that specific date is. I can tell you, though, that whenever you try and organize a program of this magnitude, that it takes months and weeks of preparation. My concern is, is that if we wait until as late as July to make a decision, uh, we will likely not be able to implement the program, um, and anything that's, that's worth doing, I think is, is worth doing well. I can tell you that specifically, um, my concern is, is a time constraint, and the reality of it is, whether we like it or not, we've been given a mandate by the legislature, and all of our backs are against the wall. I do agree with Mr. Freeman that I think it's a good idea to adopt, as the board did tonight, to adopt a, um, a task force to explore safety options, um, but what the board might consider is that that task force might be an ongoing task force that would continue to exist after the date the board chooses whether or not to adopt the Guardian program, to further examine, uh, school safety and security measures and best practices as they continue to, to develop and other ideas are, are developed around the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, I guess they don't wanna hear from you.
I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
That's what we thought. Mr. Buckles?
Yeah.
Your board report?
Well, I'm looking forward to going to the, the national ARCA competition to watch my granddaughter shoot in the national competition, so, other than that, I'm, I, uh, this, this thing, it's like, I, I keep thinking of what Leonard said, you know, after Columbine years ago, we filled the Panther auditorium, the Panther Den, not the Den, but the whole lunch, lunchroom there with literally hundreds and hundreds of people, and they spoke for hours and hours. Charlie's dad was a sheriff, and we listened to everything, we hardened our schools and we did things, and, but this is something you can't just form this committee like, like Nikki did say, I mean, let it dissolve, you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to continue to kinda depend on Mr. Weaver to keep us updated every year, whether we find a way in a, in a session to do it, if, if it's confidential and security information, if we have to go into a private meeting, then we'll have to do that as well, but hopefully we'll be able to be updated and keep up to date, because I think every principal... we'll be able to be updated and keep up to date, because I think every principal will tell you they would like to have another armed officer or trained law enforcement person on their campus, or, or at least one to, uh, to help keep things safe, because you don't know, I mean, parents walk into schools with Bowie knives on their hips, I, I mean, let's be honest, it's, it's, it's a crazy world out there. So it's not just the students you have to worry about, it's the peripheral issues that bus drivers face, and the people at the ballgames face when people wander up and in, and it's the teachers that go home and never return, as Ms. Langston could tell you, if she was still here, she's had teachers go home and never return because they got murdered on the way home, so, I mean, this is serious, we're talking human life here, and, and our kids are our most precious thing, and everybody here is passionate, but I, I think we're on the right track, I just have to have a lot of confidence in our law enforcement agencies and with our other agencies that, that have to work with these kids and identify these threat assessments and know who's liable to go off. I mean, we have, you know, the fact that we have adults that have problems, have committed suicides, so, uh, it's, it's, it's a never-ending task, and it is, it is a educator's greatest nightmare, of what, what can go wrong, and usually, if it can go wrong, it will go wrong. That's all I got.
Thank you. Ms. Gilliard?
Real quick, three things that I'd like to touch on, U-Turn for Life at the John Thieleboe Park, which will be Saturday, April 14th, I think it starts at 11:00. This is a great program for young people, and there are young people there that may have been addicted to drugs or something of that nature, and their lives were completely changed, and we have many sponsors, so I'm sure that would be something that we'd like to advertise. The second thing is, I'd like to make an appointment with the superintendent to hear, I don't wanna have my mind closed, I, I know that we're all on the same team, and it may not appear to be that way, you know, from out there looking up here, but we all on the same team, and we're, we just want to make sure that our children and that our staff are protected when they come to school, and that they're not concerned about the possibility of returning home. And so I am going to make an appointment with you and one with the sheriff, so that I can hear. The third thing is, it's just great to be back at Price Miss. This is my home for 13 years.
You wanna get on the roof, Emery?
Oh, man.
Let's get her on the roof.
Katie was one of mine, way back, we were reminiscing in the hallway about the good old days here, and I'm sure there's still great memories still being made with Mrs. Lundie and with Mrs. Hickapotham, it's just a great group of people in West Putnam.
I can tell you, I tried...
I always love it.
Tried to move her for years and she wouldn't go.
And he would always call me around May, and he would say, "Gilliard, you ready to come into Palaca yet?" I say, "No, sir," and that was it. No, sir. Yeah, but it's, it's great, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. And I wanna, you know, everyone knows that the safety of our children is our number-one priority as board members, and we're gonna have to make some really tough decisions, but we want to make smart decisions, and we want input from everyone. So, um, I, as well, will make an appointment with our superintendent and, uh, talk to him, um, and hear what he has to say, but I'm also very interested in the forming of the, um, the task force and hearing what they come up with, um, along working with all the stakeholders. Um, I just wanna tell y'all, um, I spent quite a few days of spring break grading Heffler books from the Putnam County Fair, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm, I'm gonna try to talk about this without crying, because it, it, I can't help it, David, it was an emotional thing for me. Those kids, they were sitting out, some of their handwriting was really hard to read, and for an old English teacher, I was like, oh, that red pen was, um, but, but what they said and, and what they did and the amount of work that went into those, and, and I've done the HOG books before, I think I like the Heffler books better, but, uh, the pictures are cuter, but, um, you know, and, and not just the kids, the parents and the amount of work that the, um, the parents put into it and the money they spend, and getting the kids over to the fair every night of the week and during the day, and, um, you know, they're just to be commended, but not only them, the ag teachers like Tracy and, um, the 4H leaders that are so involved in, um, teaching our kids leadership, and, you know, we, we heard from those kids, they would have never gotten up at that podium. If I had been able to take ag when I was in high school, they did not let girls take ag, we had to take sewing and cooking, which I'm a good cook, but I would have, I needed that, because I was scared to death to talk in front of people. It, you know, it took, it did, David, it took me a long...
Well, you don't have to tell...
Well, you weren't looking at me like I was crazy.
Well, you, you made up for lost time, I wish.
But anyway, um, I also wanna thank, um, University of Florida IFAS program, of which our board member, Nikki Cummings' sister, Wendy Musoline, is the director of that, and all they do with 4H Youth Development Program, and they help support and train these future leaders in Putnam County. Um, they just do a remarkable job, and, and all of our schools, um, our ag teachers are just amazing. Um, and last but not least, I wanna take, thank the fair authority, the Putnam County Fair Board, and the amount of work that goes in to that fair every year, and, um, there are too many of them to name, I don't wanna leave any of them out, but, um, throughout my dealings, I worked with Sally Becker and Wheezy Smith and Renee Huff and Marshall Fulgham and Gwen Moats, and they're just a few of the fair board, and they've all just done an amazing job bringing a blue-ribbon county fair to Putnam County. So, thank you, everyone involved in that. Mr. Attorney?
Thanks, I've been busy in the legal department, but I'll just go away.
And you'll have a phone call Friday for an update, right, with the other board attorneys? Look forward to hearing from them.
You might can work it out, but we can get her in front of the hypnotist next year.
No, I saw too many people in front of that hypnotist, I'm not doing that.
I just wanna thank the sheriff's office, we, again, an example of us working together with both agencies of establishing our substations, um, and y'all approved that tonight, but that's a definite...
Yes, I'm thrilled about that.
Moving the right direction, we have central office at Mellon Elementary, I went by there today, talked with the principal, and they're raring to go, they...
Can we go by and look at it?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
And at Brownie Pierce Elementary, we have, uh, we're gonna reconfigure some parking, but, uh, that's gonna be for the south area.
Cool.
And also, we have one here at Nellarken High, which we've had a number of years, and then we're gonna have a, another station at Miller Middle, so we're trying to, you know, have a bigger presence.
That's wonderful.
But thank you guys for working on that, and I think it's gonna be a great addition. Uh, I mentioned yesterday, or last night, our principals are meeting Wednesday, and the big thing on the agenda is talking about mental health, and as you know, we're gonna be receiving funding from the state on mental health, and we wanna receive input from the principals, input from our committee, you know, that's something that we need to decide how that money's gonna be spent, but obviously, mental health is a big issue across the state, across the nation, so that's one thing we're gonna be working on immediately.
I'm glad y'all are hopping on that board, you know, hopping on board with that.
And the last thing is, uh, last week, our instructional department put together a proposal to take to the state board, and, uh, we were unsuccessful, and we asked for an additional, uh, third year from Mosley Elementary with the state board, and we unfortunately were turned down for that, and, uh, we gave it our best shot, but I tell you, we always look for the, the silver lining of the cloud, so to speak, and, um, Ms. McDaniel and her staff are more determined than ever to make the C. Even though the state turned them down for that extra year, we feel very confident in the work they're doing, and y'all should be very proud of Mosley Elementary, because they are really, really determined to make that C. So regardless of what the state people think, uh, we believe in Mosley and, uh, very confident they're gonna make their C this year.
May I say one?
Sure, you're in charge.
I know, I forgot. I'm gonna say one more thing, I went with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, Laura France, and our director of school improvement, Jonathan Hinke, to the state board meeting in La Belle, Florida, which is really out in the middle of cattle country and sugarcane, and, I mean, it was beautiful. But I told Rick today, um, in our Kiwanis meeting, um, I've never been more proud of our superintendent and the presentation he made. It, it was wonderful, and I was so proud of, uh, Jonathan and Laura and the amount of work that they did as a team to, um, make that presentation. I, for the life of me, do not understand why we were denied, they had their reasons, but you have every reason to be proud of Putnam County, to be proud of Mosley Elementary and the work that Sarah Jean Branham and her, uh, Tony Benford and their team are doing to bring that school up to a C, and they're going to do it, mark my words, they're going to do it, uh, under the leadership of our, um, superintendent, so...
That's Ms. McDaniel, by the way.
Oh, did I say Branham? Oh, I'm so sorry, her maiden name's Branham, I'm sorry. Uh, she was Branham when I taught her, so, you know, some things never change, but anyway, if you want to see it...
Yeah.
It's on the Florida Department of Education website under archived meetings.
And it's about five hours in, we sat there for five...
Yeah, yeah, oh, that first part's really boring, you need to fast forward to, to get...
We sat there from nine to two, I think, before we...
And we didn't get anything to eat during that time, we were hungry.
Well, the state board ate, so I'm sure that's...
Yeah, yeah, they, they got to eat, but, you know, there were four counties that presented, two got, uh, granted the extra year and two didn't, and we were one of them. But anyway, that just gives us more impetus...
Yeah.
To get our C or higher.
Yeah.
Okay, that it?
And I think we have, um, executive session.
Oh.
We wanna recess and then reconvene after...
We're gonna recess for executive session, give everyone time to leave the, uh, building.